All right. Good evening. Welcome to tonight's school committee meeting. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we will be singing, having a singing of the National Anthem by students from La Familia.
We pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank all of you for having us. My name is Mr. Stempel. I'm a music teacher at La Familia as well. And thank you for having, having me again. This is our fifth and sixth grade chorus. And I want to thank Mr. Sendez, who's in the audience, who helped give us some support. We'd like to start off with our National Anthem, so please remain standing.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed as the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bongers sing in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star sing, O'neill, away? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave!
Ladies and gentlemen, the fifth and sixth grade, La Familia. Thank you very much. Have a great meeting.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I didn't do that at first. All right. Let's take, let's take a roll call.
Here.
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 All right. So we'll start with the consent agenda. Member Novak?
Mr. Chair, I believe that something, I, I, we'll take a vote if we need to, but I believe that something is actually misplaced. Um, we have a grant that's on here, and that should be under financial items rather than under donations. So i- as long as it's okay for us to simply take it where it generally would actually file in the agenda, all in favor of the rest of the consent agenda.
Member McAuliffe?
Thank you. And on item GB 3-129, the recognition, that should be to set a date. And I'm requesting that we try to set a date for the next meeting because this is a senior who will be graduating. So I'd like to be able to recognize them prior to the end of the school year, if that is agreeable to administration.
What, what's the next date?
At the eight, I believe it's the 18th.
Okay. So set the date at the 18th?
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, member Okano Novak, yours was?
So generally, it would take a two-thirds vote for us to move something off the consent agenda. But I think this is actually just a sort of an editing thing. I don't think it's really moving it someplace else. I think it generally grants would go under approval of grants and other finance items. And I think we just pushed it into donations accidentally. So if we don't mind taking it down under N, after the Standing Committee, after the report of the superintendent and the Standing Committee reports, I think we'll be fine.
Okay. So to approve the consent agenda to set the date to May 18th? All those in favor? Post so audit? Okay. So we now move down to public comment? Anyone? Is there anyone online? No? Okay. So we will now move on to the report of the superintendent. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, through the chair. I'm going to pull the presentation up. So I am the presenter tonight, so we don't need to have anybody come up. As we prepare to enter into our budget deliberations season, want to take this opportunity to update the school committee and those who are listening, watching, or will be watching this presentation. Of the various pieces of information and reports of the superintendent have come to the school committee over this school year, we recognize, I recognize that I live and breathe, the team lives and breathes this work each and every day. And so we keep it in our mind and its forefront. But for those of you who come in every other week to, to take a look at things, and we're constantly giving you new information, it's important just to do a review of where we're at. So we're calling it together, taking stock, preparing for budget deliberations. So the outcomes tonight are to review the learnings and next steps shared during the various report of superintendent presentations during this school year, and then gather feedback from you as a school committee as we prepare for the 2324 budget deliberations. Most specifically, committee, what I'd like you to listen for is, are all the dots kind of connecting as I go through this presentation? Is there anything that you hear that is missing based off of things you have asked of us during this school year or information that you've received from the community? So just be listening for, you know, does this make sense as I go through this presentation? And anything that you feel like is missing for us to consider as we move into budget deliberations? So as promised, each time I come from or present a report of the superintendent, I will link it to the superintendent goals. Tonight's very much about preparing for the budget school year '24. So what you will hear is, again, framing us up for that, that part of, a very important part of the work. I don't think that I have shared this with the school committee, but it is, this text is what we have as a school district, with the district leadership, read last summer. And we've used these, what we're calling levers for success or entry points, if you will, categories that come from the book, very recently written, 2021, by Karen Chenoweth, "Districts That Succeed: Breaking the Correlation Between Race Poverty and Achievement." Our school principals read "Schools That Succeed." So we had them read that last summer, and we read "The Districts That Succeed." And what this text did is it took a look at districts throughout the nation. And, and the researcher was looking for, what is the commonality amongst districts that are really making a difference and, again, succeeding with demographics that many people would say they shouldn't be succeeding, and yet they are. And so these are the levers. Involved families, collaborative teachers, effective leaders, ambitious instruction, and supportive environment. They're not in a specific order. They're just big concepts. As we've been working all year and developing the various guidebooks, plans, really systems improvement, this has been our guiding post, if you will, these five areas. So for example, involved families, the family and community engagement framework is related to that. That's, we need a framework because we have to be clear on what does involved families look like. Enrollment access, really supporting our parent information system to be accessible. We're working on our website and finding two ways to improve our two-way parent communication. So that's one of the pieces. Supportive environments. This is about school safety and supportive learning environments where there's high expectations. So the work that is happening in our academic supports division is essential and related to this area. Our anti-bullying approach that we're going to be bringing forward next school year, our restorative approach to discipline, and then the emergency response handbook, all fits under supportive environment. Ambitious instruction, of course, that's what we're all about. Specifically this year, we've been focusing on what we just presented to you last week, or last, yes, it was last week, the vision of a learner, and then our, our plan for innovation, our Spark Plan. And then you can't really talk about ambitious instruction without talking about collaborative teachers. And so creating spaces where teachers work together, plan together, common planning time. We launched a teacher advisory council this year. We just got it, it's been started this year. We'll keep getting better at it. Effective leaders. So this is really the bread and butter of what this research is about, is the district, the way the district runs either helps a principal to be the best that they can be and it's school to thrive, or it creates unintentional barriers. And so we're starting with instructional, the instructional supervision guidebook. But we're also going to be moving into supporting our principals and developing them with how to have difficult conversations while still maintaining the relationship and, and really leadership development around what that looks like and sounds like. So calibration of expectations and common language. And then finally, as I move into the next slide, before I do there, I do want, all right, before I go further, I want to make, I want to share with you, we just had a student, superintendent student advisory last week. Last week? I'm looking, the weeks, you know, come together. Yeah, it was last week. And we asked the students specifically around, what their school experience has been this year. And most specifically around wellness and, and the, the mental health needs that we keep hearing. But we wanted to hear from them. What is this really, what does it mean for you as, as a high schooler? And the student, superintendent student advisory is, consists mostly of upperclassmen, juniors and seniors, but not solely. It has some freshmen on there and some sophomores. And we actually put them in a fishbowl, and we listened to them, talked to each other. And it was fascinating. It was probably the best professional learning that the team has had because we learned so much for our youth. And what they told us was, you know, anxiety and stress is really high for them. Coming back to school, there, there is a angst because, amongst the adults, because they've missed some time in school, right? So everyone's talking about learning loss, learning loss, and trying to catch up, catch them up with the learning loss. But they're saying, but we're not okay still. Like, we, we, we need to heal some more before we can be like caught up with all this learning. Like, the real catch-up needs to be our opportunity to socialize with each other. The real catch-up needs to be the connectedness back into a school. They talked about them feeling like there's a loss of, community was the word that they used, and school pride, and, and again, opportunities to socialize. And, and, and I think we can all remember being teenagers and the social, the importance of social networking, right? Just having time with your peers. And, and so, and, and then they also said that there's a, a feeling, that they feel like they're expected to act like adults when they're still not, they haven't healed from, again, the time that they were isolated. So then we said, well, okay, so you've told us what it is. Now help us find some solutions. And they came up with some great solutions. They talked about, can we just get some time just to spend with our peers, right? And they weren't asking for like days on end. It was more like clubs. They didn't use this term, but in my head, I thought, you know, some kind of nutrition break or something like that during the school day. Not getting, not having this huge pressure of like acting like an adult when they're still, they're still kids. And many of them talked about, we're, we're expected to act like adults at school. And then we have the pressures of, of our home life, which require us to do some adult things that not everyone has to do. But helping them balance that. They talked about mental health days, which we agree probably is not just for the youth. I think our staff needs that too. They actually talked about how, how can their teachers help them when their teachers are still struggling too, coming out of the pandemic? They talked about training for educators. And then they also talked about taking opportunity to really get to the root causes of situations, not to be so quick just to solve a, a fight or some kind of bullying, but really, you know, for the adults to take a pause and get to root causes so that things are not replicating. So this came from our youth. So all of that, these, these levers, the information that our, our youth are telling us, and, and our, our staff is saying very similar. We were looking at some data that came from our panorama, and our, our teachers are saying similar types of information and pieces of data. So that is going to guide, or is guiding some of what we're going to be bringing forward in terms of budget, budgetary needs. Okay? So that's a lot that I just gave you. I'm going, I'm just going to remind you of a few more things, and then I'll get into some more action pieces. So in addition to what I just shared, here's, we've got this research, and what the research says really makes a difference for districts that succeed. And then our youth telling us this would help us also. And then we've got the listening and learning themes that I shared with you back in December and January from my tour when I started in the district, right? So modernization and safe facilities, climate and culture at our schools, and I would say at district level two, ongoing communications and, and ongoing engagement, wellness and mental health supports, equitable resources, educational programs, and then acquiring and retaining talent. All of that came out of the listening and learning themes, if you'll recall. In addition, on the left side of the slide are, are the current strategic plan areas that, again, the strategic plan sunsets at the end of the school year. And so the areas, as a reminder, culture of innovation, academic excellence, welcoming schools, investing in educators, and technology and operations. So you can kind of see that there's some similarities there. If we, not if, we will be taking these listening and learning themes, this strategic plan work, and looking at it through the lens also of the levers from the text on districts that succeed. And we're going to be doing, we're moving into the revision of the, the strategic plan. So I think it was two committee meetings ago. I talked through this with you. I want, I wanted to be sure that I have a visual that you can look at again, but also that those, that are people who are watching have a, a visual to see how this is going to flow. So at the next, all of the work on the strategic plan will flow back and forth between the Governance and Employee Issues Standing Committee, back to the School Committee. Each one of those bodies, the role of those bodies is to accept, reject, or modify any recommendations that come to the, that come from the task force. So our next governance meeting is May 15th. And on that day, administration will be bringing forward a list of kind of titles of groups and people that would make up the Strategic Plan Task Force with names attached to it. And, and the Governance and Employee Issues Subcommittee will take action on that list of individuals. They'll either accept, reject, or modify. They'll bring that information back to the School Committee in the minutes. In the meantime, or while that's going on, then the task force will start to convene. And as shared previously, we have contract, or Hanover Research will be facilitating the meetings with the task force. We anticipate three to four meetings to be able to take these past themes, the ones that I had on the other slide, I don't know, oh, I could go back here, to take the current strategic plan areas and the listening and learning themes, condense them into one set of probably five to six themes. Six is a lot, so less is better, less is more. And then coming up with descriptions of each one of those themes. And then, again, at each step, we'll be taking it back to governance. Governance accepts, rejects, or modifies. We make the changes in the task force area. So the task force is where most of the work gets done. And then governance takes that to the School Committee. Again, three to four meetings, and we believe we will have themes with descriptors of that. And then the actual implementation plans will be done by district administration because we have to take all these things and put them into practice, including drafting or making sure that we have clear measurable goals that we can actually bring back to the committee on a regular to tell you how we're doing. So that's the plan on how we'll take what the research says, what our current state is, what the data has, is telling us in terms of the listening and learning, and then finally, what our youth have told us as well. Lot to take in. How this, or how this then connects to budgeting is then we, as administration team, we spent some time saying, all right, if this is what all schools, if this is what happens in districts that succeed, and knowing that our, our future strategic plan will have a mix of those different areas, what do we want to start to budget so, and set our schools up so that they are successful moving forward? So what are the needs? So we're not talking about people or programs or anything in that area. It's just, what should, what should all schools have? So first, I want to take you to the visual up in the top right-hand corner. You've seen this before, I'm sure, many times. Multi-tiered system of supports is what, what it's referred to. Many times, we talk about it only in terms of student supports. But really, when you're leading, multi-tiered system of supports is a framework. It's a way by which you view what a school needs, what a student needs, what a district needs. What's in green is what everybody needs. We refer to that as tier one. Then what's in yellow is, and you can see on the visual, everybody gets what's green, and then those who need more get on top of that. That's the yellow, right? And then there's some who need even more on top of that. So they don't replace, they keep adding, right? So when we talk about tier one in terms of what all our schools need, we're saying, we want on every one of our schools these pieces that I have bulleted right here. This is where I want you to say, well, what about this or what about that? Okay? And I'll talk through a little bit more about what these, these tier one needs are. But before I do that, I also want to take you to that other visual down at the bottom, right? Which is, I'm sure you've seen this in different ways. So if we fund in an equity, no, equality model, that means everybody gets exactly the same, no matter what the needs are. Well, that would be like Worcester comparing ourselves to a nearby town, and our needs are different, right? So we don't want to plan tier one based off of what a nearby town does if their needs are not the same as ours. When you start to fund or plan resources through any, an equity lens, so that's that third picture over, you can see that you, you give people what they need, right? So you've got the three young men. One can see over the fence. The second one needs a little bit more. The third needs a lot more, right? We used to only focus on that and think about that, like, the tier one is the, the young man that doesn't need anything. Tier two is the one that needs a little bit. Tier three needs a whole lot, right? And we would fund and, and provide supports accordingly. We want to start thinking about this fourth one, which, this is labeled liberation. I don't know if that's the right term, but the visual's really good. So the visual shows, right, that you actually just remove the barriers. Remove the barriers, and no matter what someone shows up with, they are successful, right? And I like to think about this as they're playing the game of life, and they, they can all see the game of life based off of their needs, right? Because the barriers have been removed. So when we think about, when we talked about it as a cabinet team, and then we looked at what our schools also said they want, we were very much in alignment. We want to make sure that all of our schools have what they need. And that's what these bulleted items are. So when you hear from us coming forward with the, the budgetary asks, they are to meet these, these bullets. We want to make sure we have safe and secure schools. We want to make sure that we have mental wellness supports in our schools. And that's every school. Not based off of because one principal really advocated really well for this. Because then another school's principal may not know that they can advocate well for that, right? We want to make sure that we have culture and climate supports in place. We want to make sure that we have coping rooms, and we're also considering renaming those to call them wellness spaces, mostly at our secondary, but not solely there. So wellness spaces can look differently at different levels. We want to make sure that there are intervention supports. Nursing services are essential for all of our schools. We want to make sure that there is family and community engagement support. Attendance monitoring support. This is mostly at our elementary because our secondaries have this. But our elementaries don't have identified people that that's the primary role of their job. They, that's, in many of our schools, it's an add-on to what somebody is already doing. We want to make sure our special education services, that there's, there's supports in leading the special ed programs at the school. So this is less about having a special ed teacher at the school. We have those. This is more about, how do we help make sure that we're, our IPs are in compliance, they're put in place, and that there's strong communication between families, teachers, and, and the school overall? We want to make sure we have innovative classrooms in schools. You've heard a little bit about that last week with, starting out with our Spark Plan. We want to be clear and make sure that there is clear expectations for classroom supplies. There's nothing that kind of bothers me more than when I hear that teachers are buying basic supplies. I didn't like, that I did it as a teacher. I don't like that anyone has to do that. There's always special program, um, not programs, projects that a teacher might do. That might be some additional. But no teacher should have to pay for ink for a printer. Like, you just shouldn't have to do that. So we want to be clear that there are expectations. We plan on putting something in writing and giving that to our schools so that it's not hit and miss. We want to see a student incentive system at every one of our schools, and we want to support that. We want all of our schools to have, aside from, of course, this assumes every school's going to have a principal, every school has custodial staff, every school has a secretary. This is above and beyond, not above and, because it's the green, right? It's what everybody gets. But we didn't put the, those kind of things that are already in place. These are additions. But we want to make sure all of our schools have administrative support. So if the principal's off campus, there's somebody who's been deemed to do that, to be the administrator in charge. And then finally, we want to be sure that we're supporting teacher collaboration because we know that, that's what moves the, the outcomes for youth. So when I come back for the budget hearing work, I'm going to be referring back to these bullets, and then actually connecting them to, this is the budgetary ask. So for example, you will hear that there's going to be some asks around additional school psychologists. And I'll be connecting that to the intervention supports that we'd like to put in place, as well as additional support in the mental wealth, wellness supports. You're going to hear us ask for additional RAP coordinators. We anticipate, we see the RAP coordinators as essential to the family and community engagement support. So you're going to hear those kind of things, and I'm going to connect it back to here. So with that, I am done. And I'd like to actually hear from you questions. I want to clarify anything, and then anything we might be missing. And I don't know if you want it on this slide, or if you want me to go back to, probably this one is the best one to stay at. So through the chair, open to questions.
No, I don't think I really have many questions at this time. I just wanted to say thank you for the report. I think it's, talking about evaluation and instruction and the importance of that when it ties into all of this is really important with the districts that succeed. But then looking at all the different topics that you've mentioned here, that in addition, what all schools need. It's been really great to go around to our schools this year and see a lot of these. and see a lot of these things started already, and wanting to make sure that they're getting to every school, and knowing that that's a priority for this administration is extremely encouraging, because I think we have heard our students and our educators and staff say loud and clear that everyone is still struggling with post-pandemic. And, you know, whether it be the students, the teachers, the educators, staff, you know, how do we support each other better? And I recently was at Burncoat High School, and not only do they work on the supports for their students, which are, it's really cool what they're doing up there with their coping room and wellness room, but also making sure that they're doing that for their staff as well. And I think that's just such an important piece of all of this. So I'm happy to see that. I think we know that our wraparound coordinators are huge components in our school buildings. I love the concept of us talking about it being at the parent information center as well. So there's an initial target there with that, and just knowing that all of these things are necessary in order for our students to have the best educational experience possible, and to allow their teachers and those employees of the Worcester Public Schools to serve us them better. So I appreciate that these are all things that are on the docket of what we're looking at and ensuring that we're getting in all of our schools moving forward. Thank you.
Member Mailman?
So when we got the presentation, I was a little confused about budgetary. And then we're in this place, and then we went to strategic plan two. So I get it a little bit more, and I'm willing to go along on the ride. And I guess the questions will, you know, this all sounds like the right stuff. So I'm just waiting for next steps and interested in that. But thanks for tying it together for me, because I wasn't quite there when I got the package. So, thank you.
Thank you. Member Clancy?
Thank you. So just a quick question through the chair to administration. Meeting with some principals, I know that they put in their asks. And then they get back whether or not some of their bigger asks are being met. What do we use to determine that? Because I know that there are some things that are on here that, for example, I know there's some schools that are looking for some intervention supports. I know there are some positions that they've seen in other schools that they feel would be really work well at their schools. And they've been told that they're not getting any additional funds for those positions. So I'm just curious to see how we can support them if they know what they need and we are not able to give it to them.
Through the chair, very valid question. And so we, what I don't have on here that takes a bit more conversation is how we're going to be re-dividing, I guess, some personnel at the district level to then be, what we're calling them points of contact, that will be assigned to quadrants. And so we're taking existing resources. We're going to use them in different ways to provide more support specifically at the schools by quadrant, under the supervision of the executive directors. And so the principals don't know about this yet, because we still are working on it, and we're going to share it with committee, and then we're going to take it down to the principals. And so they're asking for things because they don't know where we're going yet. But when they see where we're going, we do believe that that need will be met.
Thank you. And through the chair just to administration. And I know that I've asked this before, and I think it will be very beneficial for our staff and our schools to get the big picture of where we are going. Because I think right now, there's a lot of questions, and there's a lot of concerns. And if they, like I said, even like a graph or something, the big picture. We're not, you know, just to show them, this is the plan. This is where we want to be. This is what it will look like. I think that'd be very beneficial for them. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Member Kamara?
Thank you to the chair. I just want to thank you for this presentation, Superintendent Monares, Rachel. I am excited to see, you know, the list of things here. And one that really sparks out to me, they all spark out to me, quite a few. But one particular expectation for classroom supplies, I would like to know, like, if they're, like, what do we see as a way for us to really tackle this? Because, like, the comment that you mentioned, I think it's, you know, like, for you yourself being in that position, but then for me, like, these are some of the things that when I worked in developing countries, you know, like, not having enough resources where, like, we don't have it, because we don't have it, but we live in one of the greatest countries on this planet. And to hear educators talk about, we don't have supplies. Like, from my own perspective, that really dawns on me. So I want to understand, like, what, you know, what is the, like, how does it look like? Because, you know, I think you also mentioned that this is a part of something that you hope for without budgeting, but how can our budget support that? Or how can even community partners support us to be able to do that effectively? Like, what does that look like, really?
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, so thank you for that question. In speaking with the team, I said, you know, I don't, teachers shouldn't, we should be giving some basic funds for classroom supplies. And the team assured me that we actually, they get, the schools get the money. So then I said, so then how come, how come this is happening? And what we need to do is give clarity in writing, in terms of, here's what every teacher needs to have. And it's going to look different at it, you know, I mean, even in an elementary setting, the younger students need different than the older students, right? But we're going to put parameters in place where it's going, they're going to be non-negotiables. We're giving you the funds. We're saying this is what needs to happen. If you want to buy more, that's great. If you need more, then we can have a conversation. But at the minimum, this is what each classroom teacher should have so that they don't have to, on a regular, use their own money to buy that. So it's going to be parameters is what we look at, written parameters.
Okay. And I guess my follow-up question to the chair?
Excuse me?
My follow-up question to the chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
My follow-up question is that, is this expectation, or like, this financial expectation, or this financial, you know, is that, is it just coming from us, the school district? Or do we intend to pull in other, like, supports, like, organizations that want to help us to, you know, add on to what we're already doing? Like, what is the, I don't know if it's expectation or the right word, but, yeah.
Meaning if we need additional resources, would it be reaching out to community partners or things like that? I would, I think what I can say about that is what we can, for the community partner additional resources, if you think about the colors, right? The three colors, we can use, we would access those for like our tier two and our tier three. Though the higher need, make sure everyone has base, and then reach out to our community partners for anything that we might need above and beyond. What I would never want to do is put the district in a place where, you know, sometimes we have the money and sometimes we don't, and it's for, or the resource, and it's, but it's for a base, right? We should be able to provide for the base. But then we can, our partners can help us with the above and beyond.
Thank you.
Thank you. How's that? Member Novak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the chair to the administration, what's a fishbowl?
It's funny that you ask that, because when I asked one of the students, have you participated in a fishbowl? He then told me about his fish that then died.
Yeah.
And so I said, I said, I'm so sorry, I used a term that, you know, is a bad question that I had asked. So a fishbowl is actually a process where you put, like, we could do a fishbowl in here if we wanted to. We could put adults around this table right here. You pose a question to them. They have a conversation, and everyone else sits and listens. And so it's a way to kind of eavesdrop. But you're intentional, because they're talking about whatever you want them to be talking about. But they're not talking with the people on the outside. They're talking with each other. And then what we do is we leave a couple of seats open so that if you're listening and you're like, I want to jump in, and maybe push the conversation or add to it, you can come in, add to it, and then you return back. It's a great way to gather true voice in a very non-threatening manner.
Okay, if you don't mind being listened to. But, yeah, okay.
Right. Well, and so, absolutely. And so you explained the process. Then you let the groups first, depending on how big it is, but you let people, you allow people to talk with each other first, and then they identify the one person who's going to be the speaker.
Thank you. So first, in terms of Chenoweth's book, which I appreciate, the superintendent knows this, I don't know that I've said it anywhere else. This was actually the book that I was reading when we were going through the superintendent's search. And I guess in a strange way, I've felt left out. Because one of Chenoweth's points is also that, that one of the things that makes change sustainable is the involvement and continuity of the school board. And she, and honestly, Chenoweth, by the way, is so heavily invested in this that she's actually now organizing on getting people trained to run for school boards across the country. Because she understands that in terms of the governance structure of schools across the country, that you can have the work happening within the administration. You can have it happening at the school level. But if it tanks here, it's going to tank entirely. And I don't know of any school committees that have ever done, you know, book reads together. But I will say, I felt a little left out, because I know that part of her point is that what happens here matters in terms of the sustainability of everything else. So I did just want to mention that. I haven't seen this triangle version. I've seen lots of, but, and I can't read it on our thing. So just if it's possible at some point, because I don't know what the rest of the words are saying, that would be useful. And then to answer your question, so when I get asked about what the school committee thinks all schools need, right? My first, the first place I think of, and I'm not going to surprise any of the administration here, is, you know, page 397 of the budget book from last year, which is what our staffing allocation formula is. And I say, and I, as not as surprising, I'm pretty defensive about our budget book. And that's actually something that's kind of unusual for a district of our size in Massachusetts. Boston just sends people money, and they have to kind of like figure it out, and that's not okay. What I'm concerned, I don't know if concerned is the right word. What I guess I, I'm trying to figure out is I think what is perceived by administration as our current state. Because there are issues that I have with our current state that I'm not sure I see represented here. Like, you know, I think that a commitment to things like elementary class size, which has been something that we've actually pushed really hard on in Worcester, that I'm proud of, is important. I think that one of the things that we talked a lot about when we were talking about the gap we had on the foundation budget in terms of the teaching staff, was about choices at the secondary level, within the building during the school day. And I don't feel like I've gotten to a current state I'm happy with yet on those kinds of things. I also, I think that maybe some of this, this is probably parallel, some of what Member Mailman is saying, is that I think I need to see more about kind of what is meant. Because I, when I see safe and secure schools, I mean, I think of all the emails I get in my inbox that are advertising more cameras, and more of this, and more of that, and lots of equipment. And I don't think we're talking enough about safe for who, and safe how, and the difference between perception and reality, to get a little maybe esoteric for a moment. I, you know, I want to see what the difference, what, when we talk about mental wellness, but then we're also talking about climate and culture. I think that those two things are related. Do those actually have to be separate? I'm not sure I know what intervention support is. Attendance monitoring support. And I'm assuming this is not actually what is meant, but that feels like the kind of term that you put in a presentation like this if you want to get around talking about truancy officers. I'm assuming we're not doing truancy officers. I hope we're not doing truancy officers. But that worries me. And can I just ask, why is it expectations for classroom supplies? Through the chair administration, rather than just classroom supplies?
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair. First, we had on the parameters for classroom supplies, and we thought that wasn't clear either. So we want to make it, it's going to be written clarity about what's the base where that teacher should have.
Fair enough. I don't agree with student incentive systems. I think that we've got a pretty clear track record that behavioralism doesn't work. I think it ends up leading to terrible manifestations once you get into secondary education. And I don't think that we, I think that we should be really reconsidering it in the places where we have it, and I don't think that we should be expanding it, for the record. And then the thing that I think that I'm still, that I'm trying to work out here, and again, we'll probably see this when we see the budget, is how this then meshes. So this effectively is kind of the district commitment to schools, right? Like, we are saying that you are all going to have this. But then there's stuff that isn't sort of within the, within the school itself that we also commit to, right? So this committee, for example, you know, has been working on this notion that you should be able to get to and from school in a timely fashion. And that's why we have district-operated transportation. There's things like, you know, maintenance of buildings, and there's things like the sustainability of the outside of the building. I think that I, it's not acknowledged here. I think that that's also kind of part of the commitment we should be making as a school district. And I guess I would sort of wonder, would raise the question, I guess, as to how we indicate those kinds of things. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. How's that?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. All right. So we will move on to reports to the standing committee. We are going to hold the two reports for TLSS until the next meeting. Am I correct? How's that? So we will go to the Standing Committee of Governance and Employee Issues. Member Clancy?
Thank you. And through the chair, if it's okay, because I think F and O is in between. If I just do both of them?
Do both.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So the Standing Committee on Governance and Employee Issues met virtually and in person on March 28th at 5:00 p.m. Present was myself, Member Johnson, and virtually was Member McCullough. The first item that we took up was GB 2-6, was from administration to consider the input from last year's school committee student reps to create more single-use bathrooms and limit locking of bathrooms and enhance the HVAC and heating systems. Administration was represented by Dr. Morris, and she stated that, working with the current student advisory council in the secondary levels, that they shared that they have adequate access to bathrooms, and that they also shared that if there was an emergency, they have access to single-use bathrooms at every secondary school. She also reported that they said that they found it interesting because the students had expressed that they want bathrooms to be safe and orderly. And she had mentioned that over the last several years, especially through COVID, which we know, that there's been extensive investment in our HVAC systems in the district. I had asked administration to confirm that during transition time, when bathrooms are normally locked, if students do have access to single-use bathrooms. And administration's confirmed that that is so the case. Member Johnson also asked if there is more than one individual bathroom at each school. Administration responded that it varies depending on space and location. There are several schools that have one, and several schools do use the nurse's office or the main office. And on that motion, and then I made the motion to file the item, and on a roll call of three to zero, I believe is what it should say. It says, I just want to correct that error. The item was filed, so.
We'll make that amendment.
Make note of that. The next item we took up was GB 3-50, which was to review and update, if necessary, the voluntary controlled transfer policy. I had asked administration to clarify the difference between the voluntary control policy when students apply to Chapter 74 programs, dual-language programs, and families applying to magnet schools. Chief Support Officer Az, sorry, Annie. Arzalosa stated that the voluntary control policy is used for students without the application process, for students who want to attend schools outside of their neighborhood school. So we had some discussion about the magnet schools. For example, Tatic Magnet is still called Tatic Magnet, but it's essentially not a magnet school. And I know that administration is going to be looking into making some changes to that at this, at some point. And Member Johnson asked for clarification within the voluntary control policy that referred to citywide average and the numbers regarding the majority of students versus minority students, and we had had some discussion on that. At that point, the policy needed some further work. So I had made the motion to hold that item for further review, and on a roll call of three to zero, which that item for further review, and on a roll call of three to zero, which that should, we should also make that change, the item was held for another meeting. And then we took up GB two dash two nine four, which was to review the current policy regarding service and support animals in schools and make necessary changes. I actually had made that motion to hold the item at the beginning of the meeting, because there were some changes that I wanted to be sent back to the administration to review. Member McCullough requested the policy language be specific regarding emotional support and service animals, and that the policy, no emotional support animals are specifically building-based. On a motion, I asked for the motion to hold the item for further review, and on a roll call of three to zero, that item was held, if we could make that change as well. And the next item we took up was GB two dash one one nine, which was to consider a one-year alteration of the district policy, to excuse, to limit excused absences to seven days, it was in light of the COVID nineteen pandemic. That and the next item, which is to, GB two dash one seven six, which was to review and update the attendance policy if necessary, those items were held, and on a roll call of three to zero, that was passed. And the meeting ended, and on a roll call of three to zero, which we should make that change as well, the meeting was adjourned.
Thank you. Do you want to take that? Member Novak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One statement and two questions on the report. First, I, I just want to say that I find it, and I say this as a former secondary teacher, I find it absolutely mesmerizing that our secondary school bathroom policy is that the one time that students can always go to the bathroom is actually during class, and that they can't go when they're not in class unless it's lunch. Like, I could not defend that policy to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts if they asked me about time on learning. And I just want to make that statement. I completely understand why it's done, but I think that it's probably marginally indefensible from a sort of policy perspective. I do just want to note, if we're going to make name changes and that kind of thing to schools, that does need to go through the school committee, just sort of in terms of state law, so in terms of that, that would be good. And then the only thing that I would wonder about in terms of the attendance policy, I know that about this time last year, we had a conversation about there being some students who potentially were being particularly impacted because of, you know, needing to be in isolation or needing to be in this or needing to be that. Does the administration, through the chair administration, do they have any sense as to whether or not we have that kind of thing happening this year? Because it's certainly still possible, I mean, if you had, depending on, I mean, certainly COVID's still going around, but I mean, other things like that. And if you, and if nobody knows, that's fine, I just want to ask that question, because I know that we do start to run into time sensitivities around someone's not going to get credit, or they're not going to get this, and I want to be thoughtful about that. I think nobody knows the answer, and that's fine. I'll just put the question out there for reference. Thanks.
Anyone?
I don't think we believe that that's the same as it was last year, but we will definitely look into that.
Everyone else, that? Next report. Okay, yep, go ahead.
Should we move acceptance?
We can.
Okay.
You want to do that? Okay. Motion to approve. Those that oppose? With the amendment of the three out, right? Changing?
Yes.
Yes, so we got that, all right. Those that oppose? So are they, thank you. Next one?
Sorry, just going to find it. So, the next Standing Committee on Governance and Employee Issues, we met this past Monday at 5:00 PM, and we actually took it virtually. Present was Vice Chair McCullough, Member Johnson, and myself. Represented from administration was Dr. Q and Dr. Morse. We started the meeting at 5:03, and I updated everyone with a little bit of background on the process regarding the attendance update, and how, about the dress code policy, and I had put in for a reconsideration, we have to make that change on these notes also.
Okay.
It should be dress code policy, not attendance. I had, and why I had asked for the reconsideration after we had voted the dress code policy, and we had, myself, Vice Chair McCullough, and Member Johnson spoke on the concerns that we had heard from teachers and staff in the district regarding the particular part of the dress code policy, which was to allow students to wear hoods during the school day. I had made the following motion to remove the following line at, from bullet five under the dress code policy, which states, as, and hoods can be worn as long as faces are not covered. So I'm asking that that line be omitted from the dress code policy. On a roll call of three to zero, that amendment was passed. And Member McCullough also made the following motion, that under bullet one, that we change it to, no, we change no bare backs to no backless shirts. On a roll call of three to zero, the amendment was passed. And on a roll call of three to zero, the meeting ended at 5:12. Thank you.
Member Novak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We talked a lot about dress code during the last election. It came up a lot because it was, it's sort of a, it was a hot-button issue, it affects a lot of things, including how, you know, families get ready in the morning, how students feel about school, how administrators spend their time. And one of the things that this committee, I think, was pretty unified on was that we were going to move forward with, first of all, a very simplified dress code, and secondly, one that was very thoughtful and inclusive in its public process, that ensured that there was a strong representation of student voice, as they're the ones who are most clearly impacted, that we wanted to make sure that we avoided, you know, slut shaming and making sure that there was equity across both gender and race and ethnicity and all of these kinds of things. And up until this last meeting, I feel like we were succeeding. And now we're going to police what people are wearing on their heads. And I cannot countenance us actually going back to having administrators and teachers waste their time, and it is absolutely a waste of time for them to do this. I also do want to note that what I'm seeing here with the, we have this long process, we went through two superintendent advisories on dress code, we had a lot of public meetings that were very well-posted, and then we had this particular piece reversed in a twelve-minute meeting, and that doesn't sit well with me either. What I'm seeing online right now is that I, and this is somewhat honestly represented in what the superintendent just talked to us about, is that everyone is worn out, everyone is stressed, everyone is tired. Students, as they have said, quote superintendent, they're not okay. Staff, also, not okay, and are trying to move us forward. And I'm seeing in the educational establishment at large, particularly school-level administration, but also teachers in terms of their classroom, are coping with this in different ways, and in some cases, this is attempting to sort of grab on to any kind of piece of control that they possibly can have, because so much of education feels completely out of control right now. And I want to say that I completely sympathize and I get it, but the way to do it isn't to say that we're going to start telling kids they can't have hoods on their heads. And that's what this is really coming down to. We have been told by school administration, we've been told by teachers in a public process, and we certainly were clearly told by students, that this was something that actually mattered to them in terms of whether or not we valued them as people, whether or not they got to feel safe, and whether they got to focus on algebra. I got to tell you, as someone who's taught, you know, grammar and scansion and all kinds of concepts that sometimes were pretty complicated, if the difference between a kid getting it and not getting it was whether or not they had a hood on their head and thus could feel safe for a minute or warm enough, hello, we've gotten some emails on that, then gosh, let them have the dang hood on their head. And I know that some of this is purportedly about earbuds. Having been in almost all of our secondary schools, some of our kids have earbuds in all the time whether or not they've got hoods on. Just about everywhere I go, there's people who've got earbuds in all the time. I do want to note that some of this is sometimes also a coping mechanism, because it's actually about filtering sound, sometimes our schools are loud. I understand as a teacher that it is intensely annoying to feel like you're being ignored, I've been there, but I don't think that the hoods are going to solve the earbud problem, and we already were saying that they had to see their face. That's a larger issue. But I am not going to vote to support a dress code that wastes everybody's time and honestly is policing this level of student behavior and dress. So, Mr. Chair, my motion is to approve the dress code with the amendment that Member McCullough made, because I think that that actually narrows the scope of the, sort of, what was eliminated, but to add back the sentence regarding hoods. Thank you.
Member Mailman?
Just, yeah, clarification through the chair to Member Novak. So you are, you would vote no on accepting the policy, or are you asking today to amend what was voted the other day? I'm confused about what's going on.
So, Mr. Chair, if I can clarify, my motion is to accept the report, which would be accepting the dress code, with the amendment of continuing to have the line as long as hoods, and hoods as long as faces are not covered, which was what was struck during the subcommittee meeting.
Anyone else? So, so we are going to vote to accept the minutes with the amendment of adding hoods that students could wear hoods in?
The amendment takes precedent.
What does, minutes?
You were correct, in terms of precedent, the amendment votes, gets voted first.
Okay, so we'll take the vote on accepting the minutes, and then we'll take the, right? All right, so amendment to go back to the original dress code thing that was put out on students wearing hoods in school. Roll call. No.
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 Member McCullough?
No.
Member O'Callaghan, over? Yes.
Okay, and then we will take a vote to accept the minutes, roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Mike Jay Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Callaghan, over?
No.
Member Mailman?
No.
Member McCullough?
No.
Member O'Callaghan, over?
Yes.
Okay, and then we will take a vote to accept the minutes, roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Mike Jay Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Okay, and we will move on to the Standing Committee of Finance and Operations. Member Novak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the minutes are pretty extensive, because there were a couple of things in here that I know people are trying to follow, I'm obviously not going to go through all of them. The Standing Committee on Finance and Operations met on Wednesday, April twenty-sixth at 5:35. There were present, myself, Member Mailman, Vice Chair Kamara participating remotely, and Mr. Allen, Ms. Consalvo, Mr. Hennessy, Ms. Lombardi, and Mr. Walton were representing the administration. We did start by moving three items to the FY twenty-four budget, which is GB three dash two two point one, on the feasibility of increasing the day-by-day substitute rate for licensed and retired educators, GB three dash four eight point one, to consider exploring athletic trainers, and SA three dash one from the Student Advisory Committee, to consider the approval of additional middle school sports. We did have a brief conversation, just procedurally what this means, and effectively, administration will come back with a report on this at our second FY twenty-four budget deliberation, so that then can be part of a larger conversation, since all of those have budget impacts, potentially. So, those, on a roll call of three to zero, those items were moved to budget. We next took the CMP two dash one two two four, which was the public petition from the Forest Grove students on healthy vending machines, and the short version of the answer is that we can't, both because of state regulation and because of the universal free breakfast after the bell that we do, actually do that. We have asked the students for their presentation, have not yet heard back, did ask, that was Member Kamara's request, and then Mr. Allen committed to have Ms. Lombardi also meet with the Forest Grove administration to ensure that we're implementing breakfast after the bell with fidelity. So on a roll call of three to zero, the item was filed. We then took up the streaming item, GB three dash three four point one. Do want to note for my colleagues, if you want to sort of see the full picture of what the options were that were explored, that Mr. Walton reported on, that is in the backup of the FNO agenda. We did outline all the considerations, do just want to note that effectively, this is a sole source option, as confirmed by the City Purchasing Department. The administration did also look at doing this internally, but the staffing implications, and also the fact that it wouldn't actually meet the ability for us to stream playoff games, ruled that out. In terms of the options, the one that the administration is recommending is that the district pay for cameras at each of the sites at which we do have sports within particular parameters, and that then would allow for streaming of those games at no cost to families in the district, and honestly, anywhere. With the outline of what the administration has planned so far, that would be a cost of thirty-two thousand dollars, which would come out of the Channel eleven account, thus at no impact to the general fund budget. We did have a bit of discussion about this, administration's intent would be that we would receive information about how many people were participating when we had a conversation about this for the FY twenty-five budget, in other words, what happens the first year. We also did have a conversation about what sites were included and whether or not there was a way of expanding that, that still allows for the security of the cameras and access to the internet. And so with those particular two pieces of information, on a roll call of three to zero, the administration's recommendation was endorsed by the Standing Committee, and the item was filed. We then took up GB two dash two four one point one oh, which is the monthly updates on district transportation. Do note that for most of the year, we've been running seventy-four routes, we're now up to eighty-one, so that has then freed up the seven buses that are available for athletic transportation. We're continuing to bring in new drivers, continuing to have that great partnership with mass hires. We are expecting the seventy vans in December of this year, and the gas station is now open. And it is, the district transportation has conducted almost four hundred field trips so far this year, and we will see funding in the FY twenty-four budget to be able to effectively continue that commitment. There are, of course, time restrictions, since the primary responsibility of district transportation is to get students to and from school. Obviously, we had an additional conversation about that, regarding that, athletic scheduling, training, what field trips we might not actually have done. Did also have a little conversation about electric buses, there's been another grant round of the EPA that has come out, and administration will be moving forward with that. And then, as was mentioned, I think in another context, the question of late buses was sort of floated, not making any motions on that at this point. On a roll call of three to zero, the item was held. And then finally, GB two dash two three nine point six, which is the status of the FY twenty-three budget. Continuing to see the trend of our having vacancies and actually needing to fill with overtime and substitutes, so in terms of the transfers and also what you see going on with the accounts, that is in there. Did have a conversation, a bit of a conversation about workers' comp, and also then how the curriculum that we approved at the last meeting was effectively being funded, and a little conversation about ESR spending in terms of that. We talked about ESR, oh, we also, and also how the district, how we as a committee can keep our eyes on ESR funding in this final year of spending. We also did have a conversation about where we are relative to the foundation budget categories, and will be reporting out on that at our We talked about ESER. We also, and also how the district, how we as a committee can keep our eyes on ESER funding in this final year of spending. We also did have a conversation about where we are relative to the foundation budget categories, and will be reporting out on that at our next meeting, or discussing that at our next meeting. We did transfer money. So, Mr. Chair, one of the motions we will need to make coming out of this report is to transfer $500,000 from maintenance service salaries to facilities or ordinary maintenance, and to transfer $1 million from transportation salaries to miscellaneous ed OM. On that motion, on the motion to have foundation budget category reporting at our May 22nd Standing Committee meeting, and on the budget report to be held, the motions were collectively approved, and on a roll call of three to zero, the meeting was adjourned at 7:05. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone? I actually have, I just have a question. In regards to the cameras for sports, was there a timeframe around when that, would that happen starting next year in the fall, or?
I believe so, but I'm going to defer to Mr. Allen on that.
Our intent would be to enter into a contract with them as soon as possible, hopefully to be operational for the fall season. That would be our intent.
Okay. Thank you. And I know there was a list of potential places already, and there was conversation about looking into potentially some other places. If that's decided, can you just, I don't know, just, I don't think we need a report back here, but if you could just give us a heads-up through communication, email, or what's happening in regards to that?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. And the next thing is, I just want to be sure, because I know this happened last year during the sports season, and I forget what it was, when the students had to leave early and go to some other school, and just, if there's going to be any issues regarding athletic transportation after school, where kids might need to be dismissed early to get to another location or whatever, that we're made aware of that somehow, some way earlier in the process, that this may become an issue, instead of finding out at the last minute when we didn't know anything about it?
To the chair, absolutely. I only recall a couple of times where that was necessary, but we certainly can put that in communication to this quickly.
I mean, I think this year, you know, with more bus drivers, and we probably won't run into that problem, but if we were, I think it's just best that parents and the schools and everyone ahead of time knows that this is going to occur, instead of the morning of, or the day of, or the day before, finding out that this is occurring. I mean, it's just disruptive to the students in the school and parents who are looking to go watch their kids play. That's all. Anyone else? No? We good? Two motions here? So, no, one.
Accept the report and roll call the transfer place.
So, we vote to approve the minutes, but we need a motion to approve the transfer of, what is that, $500,000 from maintenance to facilities and $1 million from transportation to miscellaneous educational. Roll call.
Yes.
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 And to approve the minutes? Roll call.
Yes.
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 Okay. General business? We have... Oh, I did, I did make a note of that. You're right. Let me find it. Okay. "To consider approval of the Homeless Emergencies Support Grant in amount of $16,000 to provide identified students with the means to purchase school supplies needing clothing and personal hygiene products." Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I appreciate the backup that we got this afternoon that actually told us sort of what account this was going into. Can I just ask sort of how that works? So, if we were purchasing a whole bunch of gift cards through the grant, which I assume is actually the, an allowed purchase, is this something where those then go to the principals? Do they go to the wraparound coordinators? Who makes the decision as to how they get them? Through the Chair to Administration?
Thank you for the question, through the chair. So, our McKinney-Vento liaison actually handles that, and it goes directly to the families from her?
Oh, okay. And how then, through the Chair to Administration, is that information getting to her?
Which information?
So, who needs them and what they need?
So, all of those refugees are entitled to the gift cards, and so all of them would get some form of gift card.
Okay. So, it's more of almost an automatic process?
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
Outside?
Yep.
Vote to approve? Roll call.
Yes.
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 All right. General business, GB 3-127, requested administration report on the donations of the work-in for Worcester projects, so they may be accepted as statutorily required. Ms. Novick?
As it reads.
And that's going to administration, right? Those that oppose? No? So ordered. And GB 3-128, request administration ensure full and fair elections are held in a timely fashion for the position of the school committee student advisory member at each high school, ensuring that the rights and responsibilities of each such, of such a position are fully forwarded to the student body. Further, request administration provide for the school committee, school committee student advisor council to meet before the end of the school year to elect a chair who will serve as the ex-officio member of the Worcester School Committee next school year. Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I try not to opine quite so much in my motions as I did in this one, but I do think that we are weaker as a committee without a strong student ex-officio member and ongoing participation. I know that I, as a member, sort of feel the hole every time we have a meeting that doesn't have a student here, and I still would very much like for us to be having an ongoing, active student advisory that's actually a meeting with us on the every-other-month schedule that we're legally required to do. And I, my sense is that part of the difficulty may be that, and believe me, this is not only a Worcester phenomenon, this sometimes gets seen as like, this sounds like a good thing to put in your college application, but then, once you get in, and it's a major time commitment. And I think we can also stray into the danger of what I think of as getting the usual suspects, right, which is the sort of, you know, who's the first person the principal thinks of when you want to make a good impression kind of thing. And I am in no way denigrating those students, because I was one of those students myself, but I don't know that those are necessarily the voices we need at school committee. And so, I'd love to get some students who, you know, are passionate about representing the student body to step forward and be here at all of our meetings. And so, that's effectively what the item is designed to do. I do also just want to say that as someone who works with the student, the Mass Association of Student Representatives through my role on school committee, I do know this is possible, and I'd also be happy to talk to any students who are thinking about running. Thanks.
Thank you. So, we'll go to administration. Those that oppose? So, no audit? So ordered. And last one, GB 3-130, administration to consider a revision to the job description for the coordinator of nursing. Member Kamara?
Thank you, to the chair. I just want to thank the administration. I was actually thinking about something, I started to laugh, but thank the administration for this. The only thing I wanted to, and I want to thank you for the revision with my recommendation the last time, but there's one thing I wanted to ask about, like, so, in the preferred qualifications, when I mentioned like Public Health Experience, Department of Public Health Experience, is that the language that can go in there? Or can I just say like Public Health Experience? Because not everybody may have been able to work in the Department of Public Health. Just so, if that's what it is, then it's what it is. But I just wanted to inquire about that.
Through the chair to Member Kamara. No, we can, so your ask is to just take off Department of Public Health, and rather it say Public Health Experience?
Yeah, because not everybody may work in the department, but they've worked in other public health positions before.
Yes, that's not a requirement of justice, so we can very much make that change.
Thank you. So, you made that change?
Yes.
So, we're, look to approve that with that change, and you don't need to bring it back? Okay?
Thank you.
We'll do a roll call on that? Roll call.
Yes.
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 And that's it for the night. We, that is adjourned. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Good night.